All right, I'll convene the meeting of the Westboro Select Board. For all those that would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please do so.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Westboro TV for live streaming and recording this for future consumption. I'll just remind the board and all those that come to speak tonight, we are still having audio issues with in-mic rooms. Westboro TV and the people that are watching online have no difficulties hearing, but in the room, it's very difficult to hear even the mics, so please just speak as close as you can to the mics. I know it can be a little awkward and difficult, but just so that everybody in the room can hopefully hear what you have to say. So with that said, I'll just open up for open forum, see if there's anybody here for open forum. Come on up, Saramini.
Hi, Joanne Aramini, Seven Meadow Road. I wasn't planning to come--
Come right close to that mic, I mean really just right up--
That better?
Yeah.
Joanne Aramini, Seven Meadow Road. I wasn't planning to come to speak to open forum today, but I feel like I have to about the January 16th meeting that's coming up on Thursday. My understanding of that meeting was that it was a joint meeting between the selectmen and the planning board, and we were going to discuss the issues that we have been bringing to open forum for the past couple of months. And I even clarified that, not once, but twice with Mr. Chairman. And the last time was on December 3rd, and you sent an email that outlined the draft agenda. And it was a very thoughtful agenda, and it hit upon all the points that we have been bringing to you guys. Governance feasibility update, the fact that it hasn't been brought to the public, input from other departments, et cetera. It was sent to everybody on the planning board, board of selectmen, everybody knew. Despite this meeting being on the books for six weeks, the agenda was just posted late yesterday afternoon. Have you guys seen the agenda? Okay. Totally different. This is a boilerplate agenda. It talks about presentation of BWALT, public questions and comments, and joint board discussion, and next steps. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't reflect, it doesn't show thought. And we're not interested in hearing about the BWALT. We've already seen the presentation twice. It's the same thing. We want to be there and talk about the issues that we've been bringing forth. That's what we're expecting, that's what we would like to see. And I don't know who did this agenda, but it shows that they didn't put a lot of thought into it at all. And to be honest with you, it stinks of laziness to me, and it's just another example of people doing the bare minimum here. And I don't think we pay for the bare minimum. I've said it once before, we pay our people well. I don't mind it, but I think we ought to get what we pay for.
Ms. Aramini, I'll just address your concerns here in real time. So I am in charge of the agenda, and I'm the one that made the final decision on the agenda along with Hazel Norris. We met yesterday with the town manager and the town planner to go over the agenda and to review the slides in preparation for the meeting. And the slides will cover all the topics that we had outlined in our original emails. It's a very different presentation than I think you've seen in the past. It's not the same boilerplate presentation that you've seen in the past, and I think it'll address a lot of the concerns that you and questions that others have raised in the community. And it should foster a conversation between the two boards that are expected to be there. So that is the intent of the meeting, and that I can assure you again, based on our conversations as well as that email that you referenced, we are going to cover those topics.
Well, it seems like a really big change from the December agenda to now. And it just doesn't feel, it doesn't feel promising, make us feel confident.
Yeah, I guess what I wanted to do was I didn't want, and I apologize, I was trying to avoid some confusion because the way the agenda is laid out in the slides is slightly different, with slightly different terminology than we actually put in that email, because obviously we've had conversations in prep for the meeting. I didn't want something in the email that was sent a month or so ago, and then something that was worded differently, in a different context. I thought that would create some confusion. So we're going to have those, the presentation, and we're going to cover those topics. We're going to provide a lot of hopefully good useful information for people in the community to understand the BWALT, all the history and all the things that we've talked about. So again, the two boards can have a fruitful conversation about the BWALT.
And our concerns that we've been bringing to you.
That's what that presentation is hopefully going to address.
Okay.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for open forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two. And actually, before we get on to item two, I just want to make a real quick public service announcement in regards to the agenda. We're going to shift around a few things, just so for everybody's knowledge. We're going to do the following order. Number two, number three, number nine, number four, number seven, number eight, and then from then on, five, six, and 10.
Thanks.
So moving forward, we'll open up number two, public hearing. Actually, are we at 10 past? No, we're not. So we're going to go to, Christie, can we do town--
Minutes?
Minutes, let's do minutes. Somebody like to make a motion?
So I would move to approve the minutes of December 17, 2024, session one.
Second.
Any discussion? Alan? All those in favor?
You just get ready.
Thank you.
There's a trial run. The shoulder's good.
Okay. So still got three minutes here.
We have--
Session two.
Yep.
Oh, session, yes. Please, make a motion for that, sorry.
So I would move to approve the meeting minutes of December 17, 2024, session two.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Okay, you can approve those, sorry, I was thinking they were separate from you that you couldn't--
I can do the town manager report if you want.
Yeah, sure. So let's move on to the town manager report.
Okay. So on the town manager report, we have the next, or the next several meetings that'll be held in the month of January. So the first is tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. We'll be holding a remote executive session with the select board. January 16th is the joint meeting of the select board and planning board to discuss BWALT. January 28th is the regular select board meeting, which includes the budget hearing. January 29th, we have a proposed remote executive session at 8:00 a.m. as well. And then January 30th is the budget summit, which is our annual joint meeting with the select board and advisory finance committee, and that starts in the morning and goes most of the day. Whoops. Just for the board's awareness, on January 6th, I attended the advisory finance committee meeting to request two reserve fund transfers, including approximately $5,000 in order to bring a new senior center and social services director in early February. And that is a, that is a request reflective of the need to pay out the retiring employee, and then also the adjustment from that S6 to S7 that the board approved earlier, or last year, I guess last year. The other request was $10,000 to fund the repair of the projection system in Memorial Hall. So, and so both transfers were approved that we're hoping will move forward in the next couple of weeks to fix the projection system. As an update, the senior and social services director position has been posted for approximately a month, and we're still receiving applications. We expect to hold interviews in the next couple of weeks. And then, an update related to the parking license. As the board's aware, we formerly had a parking license with the congregational church next to the library. Tomorrow afternoon, representatives from the town, church, and library building committee will meet to discuss the current draft of that. And if it was, if it's finalized, it'll be brought to a future meeting of the select board. One of the things that we've been working on is talking about the needs of the library if the renovation appropriation passes at town meeting. For department head updates, the fire department was a recent recipient of a training grant that was administered by State 911 in the amount of $43,866.12. So that's going to be used to perform required recertification training for all dispatchers, support the cost of third-party vendors, and to fund the department's membership with the Association of Public Safety Communications, who supports our emergency medical dispatch program. The department is still working to complete the hazard mitigation plan. To date, there are a few infrastructure updates that need to be managed. And when this is complete, they hope to bring it back to the select board for final approval. And then in the police department, they've extended conditional job offers to two academy candidates to fill vacancies created by the departures of Officer Dyson and McKenna. They now have an open position due to the departure of Officer Nelson as well. They recently interviewed a strong candidate for the vacant clinician role within the advocates program and are optimistic about filling this critical position. Looking ahead, they'll also begin recruiting for an additional traffic constable positions to ensure adequate coverage of road safety details during the spring and summer months. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Good timing. So we'll move on to item two, the public hearing, the request to amend flammables and combustible materials permit, Kayaku Advanced Materials at 200 Flanders Road. So--
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay. So welcome Chief Purcell up. Is Kayaku here? Oh, yeah. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what your, what, what your, what the permit changes are you're looking for? And then we'll have Chief talk to us about, come right up to the microphones, thanks. Real close.
Good evening. My name is Vinnie Erde. I am the senior facilities advisor for Kayaku Advanced Materials. We are currently looking to increase our flammable license from 45,000 gallons to 100,000 gallons in order to support our growth. We have a five-year master plan in place right now that includes an expansion of the facility of approximately 45,000 square feet. In order to be able to provide the space required and the capacity necessary to increase our growth and continue our growth pattern, we need to increase our flammable license permit to be able to support those manufacturing operations and storage operations in our facility.
Thank you very much for that, and I appreciate your talent, your business being in town and looking to grow in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that said, I'll just open up to the door, see if any questions specific to the applicant or if we just want to pull the chief in.
I'd like to have the chief's--
Yep, chief, why don't you come in and give us your comments? Good. As soon as I can get. Okay.
So my name is Patrick Purcell, I serve as your fire chief. I am, it's a pleasure to be here actually with Vinnie tonight. We have an exceptional relationship with Kayaku, formerly known as Microchem at 200 Flanders Road. I think that seeing them come into the community in 2013 and being able to watch them grow has been truly a pleasure for the fire department. Oftentimes, when you have us in front of you, it's not for great things with people looking to renew their licenses for, through the ABCC or liquor license or occupancy. And really, this is going to be a pleasure for me to actually speak on behalf of Kayaku. So my department is within that facility somewhere between eight and 12, 14 times annually for a variety of reasons up through and including their hazmat processing permit and inspection. Very rarely do we ever find a violation there, and the very things that you actually hear or speak about with other occupancies, hydrant testing, fire alarm testing, sprinkler testing, it is never not done. They actually exceed the threshold of the law. When it comes to like fire extinguishers, they have a monthly, a monthly check that they do, and not just the two-year mandatory test. So they are proactive with that. I brought some of those records here tonight if you actually wanted to see them. I don't think we've ever had a violation at that facility. I think that there was some concern when they first came to Westboro due to the flammable liquids and that rightfully so. I think that they've demonstrated that they're extremely responsible. They have a foam system that is in place at their, at their facility, recently upgraded to rid the PFOS of the foam storage that they had into a universal green. Is that a universal green, right? Yep. Universal green. We also have a partnership with that facility where if we use foam here, which fortunately we have not, they replace the town's foam supply as well. So we are also their backup. I read through some of your questions, I'll see if I can get to them from my point of view. So yes, we're there regularly. I think I just told you the frequency. We have no violations. What else was there? Evacuation route, yes, they have one. I brought you a copy tonight, I'll give it to Seeler, and she can provide that. We have a variety of reports that we use for our own, our own planning purposes. They have a hazardous waste contingency plan that they provide yearly. I can provide you the private, last private hydrant inspection report. A lot of places are, fall behind and don't provide us phone contact list. So Vinnie and Tom Cole are in our station, often providing us the right, the reinformation that we need, and they're ahead of schedule. We have their emergency response plan for internal people with a diagram of where safe areas are. On, that's for, just on one floor, they have one for their second floor. They do their mandatory tier-two reporting annually. Those are uploaded into our site file in their public documents, so you could request those at any time. And then we have their evacuation areas outside of their facility here as well. So this is all information that's given to us regularly. I wanted, I think it's easy when you step back and say like, geez, they got 45,000 and they're going to 100,000. It's not like that, it's, they're, they don't even have 45,000 just right, right on, on their property today. It's usually a little bit under that, but they're not doing from this to this, they're doing from this to, and then adding over here, it's part of their five-year plan. So there's not going to be some massive pile of flammable liquids. They have a lot of different hazardous materials on, on-site there that they're very responsible with. And it's not like, I just want to preface the fact, it's not like one big pile of hazmat. So it is all separated out. I think that, I think they do cataloging there of their hazardous materials probably better, better than most. And I really compliment them, I'm supportive of this. So the process, which you got in your packet from us, is on to chapter 148, section nine, and chapter 148, section 13. So they're required to file an amendment through an FP2, I believe it is. It's a fire prevention two document, and then there's a 2A. So it has to come to me first, but because of the significance of the quantity, that's a buffer. And they did that in 2013, and I think I provided you a copy of the old one, which select board member, Emery, signed off with some conditions. Really, I think I would extend the same courtesy to them today, and as long as they're responsible, and the beauty of this is, they're getting permitted, so if anything ever went awry, we could just pull it back. Pull the license back.
Terrific, thank you, Pat.
Did I miss any, did I miss any of your questions, Shelby?
Yeah, so thank you very much. I, just so the board's aware, I had sent a slew of questions over--
No, they were great questions.
So, well, thank you, but, so yes, you answered them. I did, if I may, just clarification, that would be great. So the, could you just, number one, could you just tell us what you do? I mean, in kind of, clearly not in a technical term, because I wouldn't follow.
We are a specialty chemical manufacturer for the electronics industry. So we produce materials that are used in the fabrication of microchips, semiconductors, MEMs, microelectromechanical systems, microfluidic devices, basically cutting-edge technology. And we are working towards a, the next generation of material. Right now, you have 5G phones, we're working on the next generation of phones. We are also working with different manufacturers of implanted devices, medical devices. And that is one of our specialities, especially in our microfluidics department. So we service the electronics industry, but we also produce the ancillary materials to go on, along with those primary products. So we try to give them a full suite of products that are all connected to each other and designed to work with each other, to give them a complete processing package to be able to develop their products as, as they, as they go through their next generations.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's helpful. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable or not that this has lots of hazardous material now, but I guess--
Most of those materials are actually sacrificial. So they're used in the process, but they do not end up permanently in the device.
Okay, all right, good to know. I'm not meant to hold it next to my ear so often. My family will be happy. And Chief, you touched on this, I just want to make sure. There is a, there was a pre-existing condition, if you will, of the license regarding the foam concentrate on the foam trailer expiring. And my, so it sounds like that has been refreshed or replenished. My question is, does that capacity need to be increased with a subsequent increase in the hazardous materials?
No, I think that, like, I think to go back to what I said before, so if they have, if they expand into another facility, so we're going to have a quantity over here, and a quantity over here, I don't foresee the, if there was, if there ever was a disaster and there was a major fire there, I don't ever foresee it going into two separate locations. I'm sure that when they build their next, when they go into the next phase, there'll be, well, there has to be a suppression system for whatever materials are at that, at that building.
So it'll support that.
So as far as, if, first of all, like the trailer that we have now, like, it takes our on-duty staff to operate that, even if they gave us more, we wouldn't necessarily be able to deploy that. And if the entire thing was going, I'm not sure we would get near that, to be completely honest.
Sure.
But what we have is sufficient for--
Okay.
First responders.
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate you being such a great partner with our fire department. Chief is right, we don't always get these appearances that are so complimentary and thorough. So I do appreciate that, and thank you for your thoughtful expansion with an eye toward both business and public safety. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No. I would just say, you know, the chief gives it to us straight on a regular basis, so I am perfectly comfortable with this, thank you very much. And thank you for coming tonight, and look forward to your expansion.
Yeah, I would just echo some of that, but I would just say, in my four years on the board, I, our fire chief is fantastic. And for, I've never, I don't think I've ever heard such a glowing recommendation from my fire chief. So I really congratulate you on being a partner with the community and obviously doing the right thing for your business and the safety of your employees and all those in the vicinity of your facility. So thank you very much for doing that. With that said, I'll look for--
Can I ask a question regarding the motion? So the prior-- So, the prior license did have conditions on it. Based on Chief Purcell, what you said toward the end of your comments, I'm assuming we would keep those, they are, they are general enough, they're not relative to kind of sizes, we would keep those conditions as part of this amendment?
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Okay. Yep. So, I'm happy to make that motion.
Sure.
If I can find it. I have moved to amend the flammable and combustible liquids, flammable gases and solids permit for Kayaku.
Kayaku.
Kayaku, thank you. Advanced Materials/Microchem Corp. at two-hundred Flanders Road as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you again for coming tonight, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
This is a public hearing, so.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Sorry, before we voted, we need to.
Yes, we do need to open it up, I completely forgot. We do need to open it up for public comment, is there anyone here for public comment?
I demanded you before the vote, so.
Yeah.
Nope, seeing none?
Can we revote, just revote?
We should revote that, yep.
Yep, so, I'll look for a.
We have the motion.
We have the motion?
Same motion.
Same motion, okay, so we'll just revote that. All those in favor?
Same vote, all right.
Thank you, thank you again.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I almost forgot it too. I was going to close the public hearing, I said, wait a minute.
Public hearing.
Thanks.
So, go number three?
Going to go to number three, intention to lay out public ways are a drive. So, Christie, if I could.
So, back in the fall, the engineering department had sent a memo to us requesting that we are putting sort of on our radar that for the Springtown meeting, that we may be coming forward with intent to lay out a couple different roads as public ways. So, the first step in that process is for the board to state their intent to lay out. As you see in your packet related to Zara Drive, there are some outstanding issues, and so, I know that the, the developers here and can maybe speak to that, but we also have our community development director, Fred Lenardo, here as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so if you can introduce yourself.
My name is Farouk Ansari, I am the trustee of Zara Gardens LLC, so I'm here to represent that.
Terrific. Is there anything you'd like to share with us and as part of the request? Okay, I guess I'll look for Fred to come up and provide us his comments, Fred, if you.
So, I think we're looking for comments, so, if I could, just jump in, so we have information in our packet on, on some issues that related to the project and the houses on Zara Drive that have been, with engineering drainage, et cetera, we've gotten a number of letters and comments from residents there, so I know that there's been back and forth in terms of, with our town departments and with, I believe, yourself or as the developer on this of rectifying those situations. I think, I think we want to hear from what I can see in the package, I think there's still some open issues related to that and, which makes it difficult or if not impossible for us to recommend the road now, so I don't know if you have comments on there, but I think we do want to hear from the.
Yeah. Did you have any comments to follow up on?
No, just saying that we've been working on trying to resolve those issues and actually, you know, just today, a sketch was sent to the DPW, making remedial work for a couple of lots that has some issues there, and we've been diligently working on it, we don't expect it's going to take that much longer to wrap it all up, to the satisfaction of the building Spectre and DPW.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to hear from Fred on his comments and, you know, him kind of synopsis of.
Where we stand.
Where we stand over the last year, because there was quite a history of it last year on this.
Sure. Fred Lenardo, Community Development Director, albeit I'm not the building commissioner presently, I was when this process started, so I've continued through the process. I, I don't have the authority to hold up the road acceptance, but what's happened over, the actual complaint started with grading and drainage around the house. There's been communication for the last few years, I'll say, mostly via email. Fast forward, March of two thousand and twenty-four, I actually issued a formal letter to Mr. Ansari to address the drainage issues, cited two different parts of the building code that I believe that he's in violation in. There's been some formal letters back and forth, and as recently as the last couple weeks, that cited violation notice to the building code. He's been working with us, we still have not gotten a resolve of this, I don't know when that resolve will be. Even if we get some engineering plans, there still has to be some kind of implementation. So, the recommendation has been for the Board of DPW to not accept the road, because we don't know if the drainage problems will actually go into the road, anything has to be adjusted on the road. So, the drainage, in a nutshell, layman's, the drainage around at least one of the houses, if not more, we don't believe tie in sufficiently to the stormwater system in the road. So, we're, we're waiting for his engineer to give us a comprehensive report on that. To date, we got a report from his engineer today, but I don't think it addresses the complete picture. So, again, I maintain that we, I've recommended to DPW that we do not accept the road until we resolve these issues.
Thank you, Fred. Yeah, going back through the history on this and looking at the, I think it was six different letters that were sent as part of our packet, I just want to make it, you know, clear to the community, you know, what's, what's happening here, and, you know, I look back at the memo, I think between the departments and Mr. Ansari, I think you're, you were also CC'd on that letter, which was described, described a lack of, of understanding of the engineer or perhaps yourself in regards to what the expectations of the town were to, to comply. And I'm hearing, and as I read those letters, Fred, correctly or wrong, there, one of the fundamental pieces to this was, it sounds like the town, as you just described, has an expectation that the entire development is kind of reviewed, because if I understood from the engineering side and Mr. Ansari's perspective, they're focused on one or two houses, and I think that there's a basic kind of fundamental breakdown on what the expectation is for that entire development, and I think that that needs to be clear, you know, well-understood as to what we're expecting, and I think you have sent letters expressing that, so I would just continue that. And then also, earlier this month, a notice of violation was sent. Could you just educate me on the violation? I saw a thousand dollars, is that daily, weekly, monthly, yearly? What is, what is that, and has that been actually prescribed at this point in, in the process?
So, part of the process, the, the first formal statement is a notice of violation, so that's covered under the building code. There's a regulation that allows me to do that. Mr. Ansari's given some time to then appeal that notice. So, the fines were actually, I waited until the appeal process went through and then went through and actually started to implement on a Mass General law. If somebody doesn't comply to the building code, you can then go through a process to fine them. I did, the, the Mass General law allows a daily fine of a thousand dollars as the occurrence continues. Rather than doing that initially, I sent out an initial fine of a thousand dollars, because he, as far as I know, he didn't take any action to, to appeal my notice of violation, so as far as I'm concerned, the notice of violation stood. I sent, because we weren't getting regular communication, I sent the fine out, which Mr. Ansari did pay, I just found out today or yesterday, I'm not sure which day he paid it. He did fine the initial fine. My most recent letter was that we still weren't getting complete follow-through on the whole project. As you alluded to, we wanted a complete report on the whole project, not just one individual lot.
Right.
So, then I set another date to continue fines if we didn't get an engineering report. At that point in time, I would fine him daily a thousand dollars a day for every day of the occurrence until we got the information. I set a date of February third for that second round. The reason that I didn't start on the first round, because I wanted to give him some time to, to answer, I thought it would be, it wouldn't be fair of me to just continue to send thousand-dollar fines out until we try to rectify it. That's why I gave him the opportunity for the February third. I briefly looked at the report that was sent today, but I still don't think it addresses the requirements. Thankfully, the town engineer really put together a nice letter that outlined all the things we were looking at, so that was documented as well. To date, I don't think we've gotten the response that we're looking for. So, if the February third date comes again and goes and we don't have substantial, something more substantial, then it's likely that I would continue the fines.
Thank you, Fred. Yeah, and I'll just, just again, for the sake of the, the community awareness, in the memo that was sent from our town engineer to our community development director dated January sixth of this year, it outlined four things that needed to be addressed, and later on in that memo, there are five updates provided around that, and the way I read those is that none of that work had been completed. So, I am, it's good to hear that there's communications going, and I appreciate your patient, patience with the project, Fred, and I think your approach is reasonable. With that said, I'll just open it up to the rest of the board, see what other questions or comments they'd like to make.
So, I would echo what our chair has shared and just say I probably wouldn't be as patient, Fred, so I think the, Mr. Ansari should be thankful for the approach that's been taken Based on the letters that we've received, I feel like there's a complete abdication of responsibility, or maybe a better way to say it is a sense of urgency of how important this is, and based on, again, what we've received in our packet and all the letters and just the response today, perhaps nicely timed because you're coming before this board tonight, I'm not sure you're taking it seriously, so I would, if things have not significantly moved forward in a substantial manner by February third, I would expect those fines to be applied forthwith. I'm really disappointed, we, you know, we've been hearing about this for a long time, that development's been up and running for, before I, up and running meaning people living there, before I became a member of this board, and I'm now in my third term. I mean, I, I think it's time to take responsibility and work with the town and get this resolved.
Can I, could you respond to that, please?
Sure.
I have been very diligently working on trying to resolve this problem. This problem is, keeps expanding. We, we started that, actually, if you go to that, you know, the subdivision, you will not see any visible damage of anything, there's no water issues, no water problem, however, there were some water that got into the basement of a couple of people three or four years ago, three years ago, and I still took it upon myself, dug up the entire, you know, what should have been called subdrain, and showed Lisa's department, DPW, where the connections were made. Steve Bakari was the inspector, so we dug up the things that we've already done, even though the inspector must have inspected it at the time they were laid, that was seven years ago that it was laid. And that gentleman who did that is no longer with the town, Bob Duff, that is, and we still opened it up to visually show that. We did find that one of the houses was not properly connected, and we communicated that to them. And the other house has a little swelling in the pipe, that was the other one. All the other ones, all, the rest of the houses were all checked, they all have proper functioning, you know, drainage things. I don't exactly know what else they're looking for, so my engineer had a conversation with Lisa two days ago on that letter that Fred is talking about, and he reported to me today that Lisa was fined after his response to, to her, that he will get all that done in that sketch that he sent. That sketch was sent to the DPW and to Fred today, yes. Once they approve it, and if they're okay with it, then I'll just go ahead and implement it. It's not a huge project, but it can be done. So, I didn't back off, I didn't do any, you know, but when he fined it, I just went ahead and paved it.
Sure.
I mean, I didn't want to fight unnecessarily.
No, I appreciate, appreciate that.
So, all the intentions are there to complete and get this accepted. That road has been sitting there for three years now. I paved it three years ago. So, if you go look at it, you'll believe what I'm saying.
So, my understanding, and Fred, you may, so I appreciate that you paid the fine, thank you for the additional information. My understanding is that we have received resident concerns regarding water and sediment, et cetera, in, within their homes, very recently, within this, oh, well, we're in two thousand and twenty-five, but in two thousand and twenty-four. So, I know there was reference to in the past and a couple of years ago, I, I feel like there's a disconnect somehow of your understanding of how big of a problem this is, and I think that from a town's perspective, even if it is maybe one or two houses, I think the town has a responsibility to make sure that the project as a whole, right, if there's a little smoldering fire over here, let's just not make sure that there's a bigger fire, so to speak, with the rest of the system. So, that's kind of, in very lay terms, that's what I feel like our town is saying, not to create scope creep here, but to make sure that all of the homes are properly drained within their footprint as well as the discharge to the town. So, I don't need to get into the technical aspects, I just want to see it resolved because it's expensive to you and it's expensive to our town, and we all have kind of better things to, you know, kind of move on and focus on.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Other comments?
No, I know, I think it's been, everything that I would say has been said.
Sean?
It's disappointing, it's been years and it hasn't been resolved.
I just want to, I think, clarify that you had mentioned four things pointed out, I think it's four, five, six, nine, it's on two pages of.
Well, actually, if you go back to the letter, this is what I was going to go back.
Four things, but then five.
If you go back to the March twenty twenty-four letter, it's, there's two giant, there's two sections, and within those are subsections, so in, in section one, it talks about roof drains that were directly connected into the foundation drain pipe, there was no evidence of outflow pipes from the foundation drain pipes. Foundation drain had no, had standing water, foundation drain pipes had soil buildup and signs of being saturated. Foundation drain pipes were installed at varying depths, creating dips in the lines. Drain pipes around the foundation sloped away from where the as-built drawings show the discharge. That's just number one. Number two then goes into the specifics of around two houses. I'm not going to read it all. My question is, you know, taking that letter, which was again, March of last year, and then applying the follow-up messages that were sent later on this year in, let's see here, October twenty-third, it was a memo to inform the Board of potential road acceptance, and twelve thirty-one, expedited engineers, your engineering company provided there some of their findings. Then on the sixth, again, that memo came up with further issues, so I think we need to make sure we tie back a complete circle on this, to make sure that all of the issues that were, came out on March twelfth are being addressed, and that we get a, you know, check off on each one of these. It says, these things are completed, so that's what I'm looking for from Fred to say, Fred and team to say, yeah, these things, DPW, et cetera, are all signed off on. So, and I completely agree with Board Member Marshall's position.
Say one thing, yeah?
Sure.
You can, you can read the report generated by the Inspector Bakari with the pictures, and he checked off all the lots, they're all working fine, it's all recorded and documented. He generated that, and last couple of lots are the ones that we are working on now. What I was going to say was subdivision can still be, I mean, the road can still be accepted, they're still holding a large amount of money of my bond, which is plenty to try to finish up the work that we are doing now, just the thought. This way, the road will be at least, you know, off, off the, off the books, but that's your call, obviously.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I would like to just see this nice and clean, we don't have to get into legal matters regarding the bond, let's just, let's just get the teams together, your team, our team, figure out what needs to be done, and I would not be in favor of, you know, turning this over as a, as a town road at this time.
Yeah. I totally agree. I think let's just get it completed to satisfaction, it sounds like you're working, let's get this done. We hear it from our town folks, and we'll move it forward. I mean, that's our ultimate goal is to do that, and it's for the residents, but we're right now, I think we have to protect the residents and listen to our town staff, so.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. So, what is, so.
I don't think we have any action.
No, I would just say, thank you for coming here this evening and hearing our concerns, it's much appreciated. I look forward to this getting wrapped up, thank you.
So, could, could we reasonably, we have a, our next meeting is on the twenty-eighth, albeit a full agenda, the, the letter is February third, could we at least get an update?
On a. On any progress?
On any progress, not asking for Mr. Ansari to necessarily come, but just an update on where we're at, so the board can get a pulse on that?
Yeah.
Further than our community development director, surely we can do that. I just, if you can indulge me one more minute, and I apologize, I'd like to give kudos to the engineering and DPW department. Our departments in town go far and above any town that I've ever worked with to ensure that we give our customers, the citizens of Westboro, a great job. So I, they, that, this particular community actually paid their own people to go out and camera some of the lines. So they took the initiative to bring this forward. So I don't want to make, I don't want to minimize that effort that was given by not only the, the engineering and DPW department, but the residents that actually live there. And I'd be more than happy to give an update on the 28th to the board.
Thank you, Fred. I appreciate that additional information.
Can I, one more thing. This project was part of a whole, being that it's a development as part of a special permit or site plan?
It was done as a 40B originally through the zoning board of appeals.
But it was permitted as a whole entity, right? I mean, each individual house has to go through their inspections. Where I'm going is, I would like these letters to be in the electronic file of the project, so that it's, you know, they're, I mean, they're on our devices. That's great. But I think that they, they're a matter of public record. They need to be there.
I do believe, and I'll double check that, and I apologize. I don't have the.
No, that's okay. Yeah.
No, we, so we do have a permit that's called a violation notice. If we haven't, I believe we've already uploaded those, so anybody can see those.
Yeah. And only because it doesn't come back, you know, where is it? How do I find it? So just keeping it a nice packet would be great. Thank you.
Well, and to follow up on that again, I appreciate the indulgence. I will follow up with the neighbors because there's been an email chain. I will then provide them the whole list of letters that have been sent out. Because they've been, they actually have been the ones that have been patient on this.
Yes. Yeah. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ansari.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item nine, request to include Otis Street project in the state FY26 capital plan.
Yep. So you have on, or you had on your desk a draft letter. So I'll back up. As the boards aware, we had, we had requested through our delegation that an additional, approximately $1.5 million be included in the, in the state's economic development bond bill. And so that bill did pass with the inclusion of that funding for the Otis Street corridor project. Just for the public, the Otis Street corridor project is, is a project that will expand to the intersection of Route 9, as well as down Otis Street, involving a new signaling, new intersection. It's a, it's a very large project that we've been working on since 2023. So we had received a Mass Works grant for the project, as well as MassDOT funding. We had identified at the time in 2023 what the cost of that project was anticipated to be. We did not receive enough funding at that time to cover the cost of the entire project, but we were able to begin that work, having continuing conversations with the state about the need for that additional funding to cover the total cost of the project, which at that time was estimated to be a little over $5.5 million. As everyone's aware, you know, with, through inflation, we are now actually anticipating that that, estimating that that project could cost around $9 million. So we are short the additional funding. So we've continued to work with the state. They've been a great partner in terms of pointing us to some different opportunities. The town, we've also, this board has committed 250,000 of ARPA dollars. We worked with Atlantic Management, which paid the initial half a million dollars in order to get this started. So when the economic development bond bill came about, we had asked the delegation to include 1.5 million, which is what we thought the, the gap was, was at that time. So that's been included in the bond bill. And so the next step, when you have items in the bond bill, is to request of the governor to include them in the capital plan. So the letter that we, you have in front of you is a request to the governor and also Secretary Gorkowitz to include this $1.5 million project in the capital budget for the Commonwealth's capital budget. It's in front of you as a draft. A lot of the information you've seen before, a lot of that information comes directly out of the letter of support that this board sent previously, as well as another letter that we sent for an additional funding measure that the state had pointed us to after we had received the Mass Works grant. And so I'm working with our delegation to finalize this letter, which is why it's in draft form. But I'm asking, but the letter will substantially remain the same. And so I'm just asking for the board's support of us sending this letter, so I can send this letter, as it says in there, on behalf of the select board.
Thank you, Kristi. Questions? Comments?
So, yes. I'm supportive of the letter for obvious reasons. I guess I, helping to understand the $3.5 million there about shortfall, because that's great. We sort of thought we were going to get the 1.575. What happens? Or what, maybe I'm missing the math.
Yeah. So, so we are not, based on the new estimates, we're, we're not able to, to fully fund the plan as, you know, as, as presented. And so there's a couple of different opportunities. We're working with Mass Works. We've asked, we will be submitting a contract amendment. We did previously submit a contract amendment that was declined, or not approved. And some of that was sort of where we were in the project. Ultimately, you know, our DPW director and community development director and planning director, we're having continued conversations, and we would ultimately have to reduce the scope of the project if we weren't able to identify the funding.
So I appreciate what you were saying about the, you know, that the relationship with the state seems to be good. I mean, generally speaking, as kind of things go, and with the necessary bureaucracy, if you will. I also know, from my little experience with these types of projects, that changes to projects can be very difficult. Like, so Mass Works could be like, no, this is kind of it. And there's a, there's a gap and a tug and a pull, I guess. Who has the final say on this project?
What, what do you mean?
Well, so if, if, I guess, let me, if the scope of the project needs to change, is the town, does the town have the authority to change it? Because it does apply to a state road, that being Route 9, right, at that intersection?
So we would have to inform Mass Works. So we regularly report to, to Mass Works because we do have that, that funding grant. And so we would have to, have to, they're aware of our funding gap. I mean, frankly, they've always been aware because we asked, we, we identified the cost of the project to be higher than what they actually awarded. So, so we're continuing to keep them informed, and they recognize that we would need to reduce the scope of the project. That being said, I can't, I don't know if Chris or Fred would want to speak to, I'm not sure exactly what piece of the project would be done. I expect, because MassDOT did give us $2 million, that the intersection would be the, the priority piece of that project.
And is it, is it fair to say if the, I mean, relative to the whole size of the project, the town's contribution was relatively small?
Sure.
So is it fair to assume that if the project changes in any scope, that that $250,000 is fully committed at this point?
It is committed, yes. Yeah. And that, in addition to, in addition to what you just said, which is that it's a small part of the funding source, it also is an ARPA project and needed to be under contract by the end of the year.
Good point. Yep. Thank you. Okay. So I'm supportive of the letter. I mean, just to close out my comments, I mean, it's a, the price tag changes, wow. I don't know what, so if, if the scope of the project needs to change, does, does that come back to any board, planning board or otherwise, to provide, to weigh in on like what we want to do and what we don't want to do? How does that work?
I think that we would get guidance from Mass Works in terms, because they, because they funded the project as proposed, I think that we would get guidance from them. I expect that we would report back to the sport as well as the planning board.
Okay. And what's the timeline around that, Kristi? Like, when, when, when will we get the next update, do we think?
I'll, I'll provide an update as soon as we hear back on the contract amendment, which has yet to be submitted. And when we hear back on this letter, I mean, I continue to try to keep the board updated, as do the other department. No, no, I know. I just, I don't have a, I don't have a specific time. It is, we, in the next couple of months, we'll get to 100% design. And if we don't have the funding at that point, when we put it out to bid, we're going to have to understand that as, and certainly we can't sign a contract if we don't have the funding.
So it sounds like from the letter, the plan was to go out to bid this spring. Get to 100% design, so the next few months, and then go out to bid.
Construct in the late summer, fall. Yeah.
But if the bids come in, we don't have the money. We have to figure out where we get either money, or we have to reduce.
The scope of the project.
I may be confusing the, the different entities that hold funding sources, but I know that Chris has, I know we have a future project on the tip for East Main Street, but CMRCP often has projects, like, is there a role here with CMRCP? We're not even in that queue to say, hey, if there's some extra money laying around, this is an important project, and, and the Mass Works kind of element could be an influencer there. I'm guessing no, but I just want to ask.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we would exclude any funding source that is available. But, you know, we, we have received money through the Mass Works grant. We've received money from MassDOT. We also received funding through the, through Complete Streets. And then we got additional funding through, I can't remember the name of that, this other grant, but it's another grant related to traffic. I'm sure Fred and Chris have it.
For this one project.
So, right. So we've, in addition to our own contribution, as well as private business contribution. So we are pursuing different opportunities. And I believe CMRCP is aware of it. I'm just not sure that.
I'm, I'm sure that's been covered, but I guess it, you know, if we haven't touched base with them on this bit of a problem, it might be worth that. But I'm, I know Chris is in regular conversations with them. So, as is our planning director, so.
And just confirming, the businesses that are partnering for the Mass Works grant, that's substantial funding as well. They're still committed to move forward with the project?
So Atlantic Management funded the initial half a million, which included public outreach, the 25% design. I think it says it in the letter. So I don't believe that there's additional funding that they've committed to. But they, they, oh, the corridor study, actually. So they, they initiated the project.
But they're still supportive of moving this forward.
And they're absolutely supportive of moving it forward. Yeah.
Sean, did you have a question?
I guess just quickly, so our portion of this project is ARPA money. That is required to be spent by the end of 2026, correct? So as part of the, this initial phase, the getting to 100% design, our 250 is, I guess, is going towards that, right? So we're guaranteed to spend it rather than.
Yeah, we'll make that sound fine.
Okay. Excellent.
So I'd move to authorize the town manager to finalize and send a letter requesting that the Otis Street funding request is approved and the economic development bond bill be included in the Commonwealth's fiscal year 2026 capital plan.
Second. Any further discussion? I'll just say, Kristi, thank you for writing this letter. I find it to be very appropriate for a very important project to the town, much needed project for the town. So thank you very much for doing that work, and I look forward to hearing back from the governor's office. With that said, I'll look for a vote for all those that approve. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item four, approval of drainage easements and right of way, right of entry for Bowman Lane culvert replacement project.
So you have three easements in your packet. The right of entry, actually, it was signed by, by, by me, because I can, I can sign that. But you would need to accept the easements. So these are easements related to the Bowman culvert project. They are already signed by the property owner. Unlike other types of easements, this one does not require a town meeting vote because they're drainage easements. But if you have any further questions, oh, thank you. Our DPW director is here.
Thank you, Kristi. Open up to the board. Questions?
I mean, because they're signed and the residents are.
Residents are happy, the diagrams are clear, we know what's happening on.
Yeah. Appreciate that they were part of the process, willing to support the easements or participate.
Okay, terrific. I'll look for motion.
So I would move to accept permanent easements for drainage purposes on properties located at 9 Bowman Lane, 11 Bowman Lane, and 29 Old Coach Road, Westboro, pursuant to the provisions of general law, chapter, chapter 83, section 4.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Kristi. Moving on to item seven, approval of Regional Emergency Communications Center director position, amendment classification plan, and approval of job description.
So in our continuing work to stand up the Metro West Regional Emergency Communication Center, we would like to move forward with hiring an executive director for, for the center. The benefit of hiring them now is that they could lead the project. As, just as a reminder, we have three towns that are currently working on this. So Southborough, Grafton, and Westborough. So hiring the executive director now would allow them to not only lead the project, but also inform the design of their future workspace with, that they would be in charge of. So because Westborough is currently, as, as agreed to in the intermunicipal agreement with the other communities, Westborough is the fiduciary on the project, so we receive the, the state 911 grants, and then they're expended out of, out of our finances. So, so project's fully covered by the grant. The request here is that the executive director initially be added as a Town of Westborough employee. Part of the reason for that is because all the benefits that are required for an employee, so insurance, retirement, things like that, have not been fully stood up for the district. So one example is, we have taken the vote that we need to take to enter into the West Street Regional Retirement System. You can only enter into that system on January 1 and July 1, and you have, it has to be at least three months. You have to, sorry, it's, you have to let them know three months before. So we didn't make the January 1, so we'll make the July 1, as an example. So we would like to bring this individual on as Westborough employee, which requires this board to add it to our classification plan and approve the job description. As you'll see, the request is, the, the motion that we put in, in front of you, is to make the amendments necessary to add this position contingent on state funding. So Chief Purcell has, is working with state 911 to amend the grant in order to cover salary and benefits of this position, so that it will not, not be any cost to the Westborough taxpayer. But we would need this board's approval anyway to bring that, to bring that employee on. So the, the job description that you have in your packet, and the proposed salary schedule, has been reviewed and approved by all of the police and fire chiefs of the three communities, as well as the governing board, or the board of directors of the district, which is the three town managers. So they voted a recommendation to this board, understanding that it would be a Westborough employee initially. And Chief Purcell can answer other questions as well.
Thank you, Kristi. I'll just open it up. Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add? No? Terrific. Any questions?
That makes sense. I think making a contingent on the state, funding it, that's the important thing that we don't, as a town, have to pay anything.
Absolutely. I did have one question for you, Kristi. Just playing out the scenario, this individual becomes a Town of Westborough employee. When the rec gets stood up, that, I'm envisioning, if I'm correct, that that position now would fall underneath the rec. So how does, what is that process? How does that move off the town books onto the rec books?
So we would, I don't know the exact process. I mean, we would transition that, we would separate them as an employee of the Town of Westborough, and then they would be hired into the district.
Okay. So it's black and white?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if it was more convoluted, so.
I don't think so. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
At some point in time, then, would we basically take a vote to remove that from our?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that. I'll add that.
Okay. Just to get it off our books.
Yep, makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. With that said, I'll look for any motion.
I move to approve the inclusion of the Metro West Regional Communications Center executive director position in the Westborough Classification Plan, classified as S10, contingent on the state's approval of funding the position's salary and benefits, and further to approve the job description as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you again, Kristi.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to item, moving on to item eight, amendment classification Moving on to item, moving on to item eight, amendment classification plan, public works position.
All right, so two further requests related to our classification plan. We currently have two different mechanic positions within the Department of Public Works. The titles are master mechanic at a grade W6 in a mechanic position, grade lower in a W5. We've had a vacancy at the mechanic level for well over a year now, and actually, it's probably closer to 18 plus months because we, we had a prior vacancy as well. In reviewing, with the long duration opening and reviewing the job description and the needs of the department, the director recommended that we effectively eliminate the mechanic position. We actually, we have a need for two master mechanics based on the duties and the responsibilities, and we believe that would further help us in our recruitment efforts to actually be able to advertise at that level. So the request is to remove the mechanic position from the classification plan and to add a second master mechanic to allow us to hire two individuals at that level. This position is in the DPW union. We've had some preliminary discussions with the union about our interest in doing this. They've expressed initial support. We would move forward once we have their final agreement.
Thank you, Kim.
Can we just ask about the budgetary impact?
We're able to absorb it because the position has been vacant.
In this?
In this fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
And what's the, if, if both were to be filled in FY '26, what's the increase?
We, I don't have an exact number. Part of the, the ranges do overlap, so part of what we have the ability to do is potentially bring someone in. What they're really gaining is the capacity coming into that higher grade. There may not be an immediate budget impact, but I, I don't have an answer. Mechanics, we've, we've done a lot of outreach to try and get a sense. I think everyone is having a difficult time filling mechanic positions, so we're hopeful that this move helps us in our recruitment ability, but to be completely transparent, we do recognize we may have to move higher into the pay grade, so I just, I don't know what that looks like at this point.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of the recommendation from our DPW director and, like, I understand that. I guess I'm not understanding how creating two master mechanics helps us to fill at least one that's been vacant for a while.
It's a higher level, when you look at the job description, it's different responsibilities, higher level of responsibilities, it's more reflective of what we're looking for, and it also, because of those responsibilities, it moves it up a pay grade. And that, that has been part of the issue.
But we haven't, maybe I'm misunderstanding, I thought we haven't been able to fill the master mechanic position either. Am I missing?
No, that's filled. It's the W5 mechanic position.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
So that's, we're still keeping two mechanics.
Yes.
Well, we're removing the mechanic and we're going to basically make two masters.
I think the other one is becoming available.
Disregard.
So the master mechanic position, we don't have a vacancy.
Correct.
W5 regular mechanic, we do. We're, we're, we need, the needs are such that we need another W6. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Light dawning.
Questions? I thought, I saw your hand raised a moment ago.
No, it was answered, so I'm good.
All right, Alan, anything?
No, no, this sounds like a good move. I know, just from business owners I work with who look for heavy equipment certified mechanics and master mechanics, that it's a tough, tough market. And actually, at the master mechanic level, I could see this being very attractive because, you know, this position comes with what a lot of positions don't, such as participation in a pension system.
Right, sure.
And it can be, you know, provide folks a more stable environment where they often hop around from company to company fairly frequently.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, sorry, I mentioned that, you know, clearly due to the length of time that this position has been open, there has been an effort to try and get this filled and that the director and staff didn't take this lightly in, in making this change. I appreciate that and I'm supportive of the change.
Okay, thank you all for.
Should we do this as its own motion? Because we have another one.
We have a second one.
Yeah, yes.
So, so I would move to approve the amendments in the classification plan as presented for the W5 mechanic elimination, moving, adding another W6 master mechanic to the classification plan.
Second.
Subject to the completion of impact bargaining with DPW union.
Good catch.
Second.
Second, sorry, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, Kim.
Okay.
Next one.
Shifting to the water department, we have two vacancies. So this is where we do have two vacancies in our, the actual job title is water maintenance craft person two. So this is our grade W5 position. Again, challenging positions to fill, they do have licensing requirements, you know, these are, these are not entry level positions. The director has recently asked, based on the last round of interviews, for the ability to temporarily fill the W5 at the lower W4 level, based on a candidate who may have licenses but not experience or vice versa. The request here is for temporary authorization, so given that there, it's a W5 vacancy, not looking to permanently amend the classification plan, rather fill the W4 and then once someone within the department is ready, we would, we would then at some point in time, go through a promotional process. So we're looking to retain the ability at some future point to promote an individual up to a W5.
So basically, you want to use the open seat at a higher level?
Yes.
Because we have the need?
Yes.
At a lower level.
Yes, the higher.
If vacancy is a higher level, we want to, we want to move it to a lower level and fill it, so we have the people, but keep that open, that.
Correct.
So we're not talking about adding, you know, individuals to the depart, it's, it's just within the plan, some flexibility, given the situation at the present time. Similarly, to my comments with the last request, we've had some, we would need to get final authorization from the union before we could move forward with this.
Thank you, Kim.
Kim, you mentioned that the union was supportive of, generally supportive of the first position we talked about. Is there a sense that there's support here as well?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Shelby, would you like to do the honors?
Oh, gosh, I got lucky when one moved to approve the amendment to the classification plan as presented, adding a W4 water maintenance craft person two.
One.
One, sorry, one, while keeping, on the classification plan, the water mains, maintenance craft person two, grade W5.
Subject.
Subject to completion of impact bargaining with the DPW union.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Quick sound check for the audience on these microphones. Do you all hear us over there or we need to speak louder? Doing okay?
Yeah.
Because it's, I know it's a little dicey, so just want to make sure people can hear it. Okay.
It's okay, lost interest.
Okay, moving on.
Back to five.
Item, item five, request to allow consumption of alcohol on town property at Westboro Public Library Foundation event on January 31, 2025, at the Westboro Public Library at 55 West Main Street.
I'll start, and that, so, so as the board is aware, we updated the bylaws a couple years ago that gave the board authorization to permit consumption of alcohol on town property. So the, while the event needs a one day liquor license, that's something that, that I can do, this is your permission, and you had to, for alcohol consumption at the library for this event. And you also have, I think, in your packet, a letter from the chair of the library board of trustees, just expressing their support of the event at their building.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to share with us the event, Maureen? Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
The event is.
Just introduce yourself if you can.
Introduce.
Yeah, into the mic.
Thank you. Maureen Johnson, I'm chair of the Westboro Library Foundation, and the Library Foundation and the trustees are co-hosting a mini golf event called Put For The Library, and this is a fundraiser to support library renovations and the library in general. The event is on January 31st, on Friday night, 6:30 to 9:30, which is actually the, the event that we're requesting the one day liquor license for. That is 21 plus only. And then the event continues on Saturday from 11, 10 to 2 for children and families, and that is free. Friday night is a ticketed event. The, there will be music, live music, food, if we get approved for the liquor license. We will have beer and seltzer for sale. The bar will be set up, the bar, serving area will be set up where the circulation desk is, so when you walk in the library, straight ahead to the left. So it's kind of already a bar, actually, so that'll work out just fine. What else? What else do you need to know?
Very helpful. Any questions?
No, I think it's creative, it's nice to see the Westboro Library Foundation coming forward in advance of town meeting, because I know that was sort of like where, you know, that was the feedback from the last town meeting, what's going on, and love the collaboration with the friends, so, sounds like a great event.
Excellent.
Perfect. How many, how many holes on the course? Any, any idea?
Pardon me?
Sorry, did you say how many holes were on the course?
There's 18 holes on the course.
18 holes?
And if you are interested in a sponsorship, I'd be happy to sell you a sponsorship, $500 per hole. It's, actually, it's kind of fun, there, there's, so it's all through, I haven't actually been, but I've seen the diagram, so it's the mini golf. We actually hired a company to do it, so it's not me, thank God. So the company will come and set up the whole mini golf course all throughout the library and the stacks, and each hole is sponsored by, whether it's an individual or a company in the community, so it's, and you can decorate your hole, so it's a good marketing opportunity. But it's, I guess, this is the third year, I have not been involved, but it's the third year, and it's very well received, it's a great community event, so you can buy your tickets online at the Westboro Public Library website, and if not, you can come on Saturday and play mini golf, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks.
With that said, I'll just look to see if there's any final comments.
Maureen, I would just say, Maureen, thank you for your support of several organizations in town. Very much appreciated.
Definitely. So I move to grant permission to the Westboro Library Foundation to include service, sale, and consumption of alcohol on January 31st, 2025, from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM at the Westboro Public Library at 55 West Main Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, Maureen.
Thank you, guys. We'll see you on Friday the 31st.
I'm going to win.
All right. Number six, review of draft town meeting warrant. Kristi.
Yeah, so this is the first draft of the town meeting warrant. I actually already have updates that I need to make to it, but not additions at this point, so I didn't know if you wanted to just run through it quickly.
I think that'd be great.
Okay. So the first, the first article is.
Can I ask a clarification? Are we asking any questions at this point, or is this really for kind of general public consumption and awareness of what's on the warrant?
And to add to that, are you looking for at this point, any of our feedback in regards to who we want present to us?
It would be great to hear who you want to hear from. I think a lot of these are actually going to be spoken to at the budget summit, and I can, I can acknowledge that. Any questions could, could be helpful, Shelby, in terms of kind of the future presentation.
It could just be annoying.
And maybe, maybe, Kristi, real quick, before you start digging into it, I apologize if you already said this, what is the, what are the, what's the timeline you're working towards to get the closing of the warrant? I think on February 25th, I think is what we're targeting.
Yeah, we typically close the warrant the second meeting in February.
Okay.
I can't remember what the exact date is, but.
And I know you've put out a, a call for action for folks to provide articles.
Yeah, so actually, the, the deadline for provision of, for providing articles was January 3rd.
Okay.
Usually I get more, so it's possible that we'll get more, but, but I think in terms of what we can expect from department heads, I believe I, I would, I know about them at this point.
Okay.
We could get citizens.
Certainly, yeah.
Exactly, yep. Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So Article 1 is the town election, Article 2 is the town reports, so those are standard ones. Article 3, as I, we've been doing the past couple of years, is a placeholder in case we find a prior year's bill that needs to be approved. Article, oh, Article 4 is also a placeholder. I, I put it on here because sometimes in the past, the advisory finance committee has had to make transfers in large amounts to different departments for unanticipated costs that have, have come up that can't be covered through the budget, so this is, this is an article that would replenish the reserve account, but at this point, I don't believe that they've had such a transfer. The ones that, again, that I went for last week were about 15,000 in total, so, but again, that's just a placeholder. Article 5 is, we're going to need some additional funding related to legal expenses. That is related to the different litigation that you see on the executive session. I will just say that, that this year, unlike previous years, we are also increasing the legal budget for fiscal '26. Article 6 is the fiscal '26 operating budget. Article 7 is a request from the school department to create a special education reserve account.
Question?
Do you want to ask me, or do you?
No, just question, lots, lots to learn there.
Okay, so, so I expect we'll speak to it at the budget summit, but essentially, there's a Massachusetts general law that allows the special education reserve account where money can be transferred in, and then it can actually, it's similar to the advisory finance committee reserve account, where it can be, the money can be appropriated without further authorization from town meeting, but it does require a majority vote of the school committee and then a majority vote of the select board to be expended.
I guess, I have a quick question on this too. In the article information, it talks in the second sentence, this act allows district to establish and appropriate transfer money to the reserve to be used for pays for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs for special education, out of district tuition and, or transportation. Down at the bottom, it says, monies held in the stabilization fund can be applied only towards special education expenses, so those two things don't, if I'm understanding them correctly, don't line up, so.
Those, those items that you mentioned in the first sentence are related to special education.
Okay.
So it just sort of generally says it.
Special education, transportation.
Right.
It's all really, all those, okay.
Yeah, no comment there.
Thank you.
But it doesn't, just, I do think the, the article itself could say special education out of district tuition or special education transportation. I think that clarity would be, I think, helpful, because I can see someone reading that saying, or transportation, it doesn't mean that it's.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Sounds like I'm splitting hairs, but I don't think.
It might be repetitive, but it'll clarify.
Okay, I will mention that to the superintendent and then we can go from there. Okay. Article 8, Article 8, we need to have further conversation as an agenda item for this board. We're, we're proposing to establish an enterprise fund for waste, waste management enterprise fund. This is, this is very common in communities where there's a pay as you throw program, but it essentially would allow us to, to use the, the revenue that we are receiving from the permits as well as the bags to go directly to fund the, the budget. I, I don't want to confuse anyone, we are not expecting that the, the revenue will cover the budget, so like in most communities that have this type of enterprise fund, it would be subsidized by the general fund. Some of that subsidy, I think, would just make sense, because it's funding the, the waste management at our municipal buildings, and so that really is a, a general fund expense. But one of the benefits of this is that it more clearly articulates the cost of the program and gives some clear transparency, I think, to the public in, in a way that, sort of the way the budget is set. of the way the budget is set up now, is just a little bit harder to see, because estimated receipts show up in a different place than the actual transportation budget. So I think we should have brought our conversation on that. I just put that on there, because I think we should talk more about it.
Thank you.
The next article is related to the request that we received from Westboro TV, which was to subsidize that program, based on the fact that they're not receiving as much funding from the franchise agreements. We actually today had a meeting with our representative from the Department of Revenue, and we talked about how we could actually combine this article and the enterprise fund article. So you'll see that as one article in a future version of this. So the next article is the regularly recurring article. So the reserve funds, we always have restocking of Sandra Pond, the cable TV article I just mentioned. So we'll actually combine that with Article 9, the Fourth of July block party.
Can I ask a question on that? Is there, you don't have to answer this now if you don't know the answer, bud. Is there a reason why, for the Item D, July 4th block party, that Spirit Committee funds could be used for this versus a transfer from free cash? And can we look into it, I guess is my question?
Yeah, I mean, the challenge with the Spirit Committee funds is that the way that they were appropriated at town meeting was for them to set up an annual event. So-
A new annual event, specifically.
Does it say new?
Yeah. Or an additional-
All right, well-
I can pull that, and I can send it out to the board.
Side note, let's figure out how to change that, because, but, anyway, okay.
Go to town meeting.
All right, I mean, I know it's only $3,500, but it's money that's just sitting there not being used.
It's money that we have, yeah. Okay. Yep. The next one is the Small Business Grant Program from the EDC. So this, again, this is a program that's been going on for several years, and that started around the time that we started receiving revenue from the digital billboards. So even though it doesn't, it's a, it's a revenue that comes into the general fund, and now we appropriate it, this program through free cash.
I feel like it's been a little while since we, what's the award cycle, Sean, on the small business grants?
Typically, it's quarterly.
Okay.
So they award quarterly. Currently, currently, there is a, there has not been as many awards this fiscal year. And the way this works is we only then replenish it up to 60,000. So it may be that the final amount needed is less than 60,000. We'll see.
And, and if the amount coming from the billboards is greater than what's needed for this, where do those funds go? To the general fund?
All of the funds go into the general fund.
Yep.
And then this comes out of free cash.
This just gets peeled off, okay. It would, it would be helpful, I think, at some point, we have a new economic development coordinator, to get an update on those grants, calendar year, or just some sort of update. What have they gone to? I just feel like I don't have visibility to that, so.
Yep.
The next one is actually an ad. It's a new regularly recurring article. Last year, it was its own article, and that was, is a, what we did was, we took the elections budget out of the budget, and put it as a free cash article. And the reason for that was because we receive funding from the state that goes into the general fund. And so this is a way to sort of allow that to become free cash, but then sort of through these, this mechanism, use it for elections and town meetings. So there actually is funding for elections and town meeting remaining from last year, which is why you're only seeing a request for 49,000 in fiscal '26. Article 11 is capital improvement article. I won't go through all of them, but I will say that all of the capital requests are from departments that you'll hear from at the Budget Summit.
This is all what, as we talked about before, came through the Capital Expenditures Planning Committee.
Can I just note that on utility vehicle replacement A for the fire department seems to be inconsistent with C for police vehicles, specifically where for police, it says, "The department plans to purchase hybrid vehicles wherever, whenever possible, in alignment with the town's Green Communities Initiative." But the fire department one says, "The department seeks to replace these vehicles with a modern hybrid or electric vehicle if feasible." I would think we would want consistent language there, and I wouldn't want to hold the fire department to a different standard. And I'm not sure that we have the electric infrastructure right now to charge those vehicles, you know, for public safety purposes. So we can talk about it, but I just noticed that distinction.
Yeah, the police vehicles are not plug-in hybrids. They're, they're not, so-
No, I know, but I'm wondering why we're putting that requirement on a fire vehicle.
That's how they proposed it.
My, my reading, it maybe could be more clear of that. They're planning on a hybrid vehicle, but if there is an electric vehicle, that would be appropriate. They would do that.
This is, so this is closely in alignment with what the zero emissions vehicle policy is that we're working on right now, that we're bringing to the school committee next week, and it'll come before the board in the weeks to come. So it meets the intent of what we're looking for.
Yeah, I remember the utility vehicle is more standard. So it's not a fire truck, it's not an ambulance, it's a SUV.
Yeah, I just, I think there are going to be some questions about that. We'll hear about it at the meeting, just in terms of use, responsiveness, charge time, all that, you know, infrastructure to support if it has to be plugged in. And then if, in fact, that, again, just for continuity, under the police vehicles, we're referencing the town's Green Community Initiative. We don't reference that in 11A. So, again, there should just be a tie-down there.
Yeah, I think it should be consistent across them. You know, just again, in regards to the hybrid electric vehicle, if feasible, the terms we use inside the zero emissions vehicle policy are applicable and practical. So, you know, we're, there's, there's an expectation that the department heads will be able to make that assessment and apply appropriately. Go ahead, Kristi.
Okay. I will note that there's missing an article here. What we've been doing is that if there's different, if there's requests that are coming through the capital planning committee that are resulting in additional debt, we do, we've been doing a second article, so that we can clearly show that it's supportive by the capital planning committee, but it's a separate article, because it requires a two-thirds vote. So that is missing. That was my mistake. There are two requests coming through the capital planning committee that are borrows, and they're, they're both in the enterprise funds. I believe, I think they're both sewer. So I will include those in the next version. But those are the borrows, and they require a two-thirds vote. And you'll also hear about those at the Budget Summit from the public works director. Article 12 is an article we talked about last week, which is the HVAC rooftop units at the community center. I will just note that one of the discussions that we're having, and you'll see in the next version, the HVAC rooftop units, as was proposed by our architect, was at 989,500, inclusive of the pool pack. So the, which is, represents about 165,000, and actually doesn't qualify for the incentives. What we've talked about, and how we want to propose it differently, is to include that pool pack into the pool capital article. Because ultimately, if the town is not in favor of the pool use or rehabilitation, then we wouldn't want that to be part of the pool pack. So we can speak more to that. We'll have another capital planning committee meeting to just kind of go over any of the changes that we make. But we think it just makes sense to include that in as part of the entire pool project in terms of approval from town meeting for funding.
Makes sense.
The next article, fence installation at the golf club. The recreation department is not typically at the Budget Summit, but we've asked them to come this year, because we want to speak, we want to be able to answer questions about the community center. And so they'll, she'll also be there to speak to the golf club requests. But this is a request to come from retained earnings, as is the installation of drainage in Article 14.
Quick question. So I, I look at some of these articles, and I say, "Why aren't they in the capital improvement plan? Like, why are they, is there, did these not make the cut?"
No, so they, so there's a, the threshold is 25,000. So the fence installation doesn't quite make it in terms of the thresholds. And then-
The drainage would-
Yeah.
The drainage was right at the 25.
Yeah, neither, neither one of these was on the-
Right.
-capital expenditures plan that we reviewed.
Okay, I guess, so in the-
So I mean, these are new to me, seeing these tonight, too, so.
Okay. Curious.
Article 15 is for hazardous tree removal. This is from the Conservation Commission. As the board's aware, in recent years, we've significantly contributed to the town's open space, and there is backlog of maintenance related to the open space areas. But hazardous tree removal in particular is something that our conservation director is attempting to work through. They are working with the DPW, but in cases where they need to hire a contractor, it is a very expensive, it's very expensive to have someone come in and do that. So she is not coming to the Budget Summit, so I expect that we'll have her come to a separate meeting.
Don't know if you know the answer now, Kristi, but is this a result of not having the right equipment? Or is this just sheer volume of work? We need extra resources to do this work?
Volume of work. Yeah.
So I guess sort of, and I know the Conservation Commission doesn't really come to the capital planning meeting. Is there, like, could they convening consider this article? Like, what's the, what's the thought there? Like, in the capital plan, not in the capital plan?
This isn't a, this isn't a capital item. You're not purchasing a capital item. This is-
Oh, it's just maintenance.
So, so as you might remember, so, yeah, that's exactly true. But, so just a little more background to this. So last year, the, community development asked for an increase in the budget to cover maintenance of conservation land. And what we had said at the time was that, that the increase in the budget for fiscal '25 was not, that that funding level was expected to be expanded going forward. When we came to FY '26, what we've identified is that, you know, the plan that I think we had anticipated to bring to you isn't really ready in terms of what that should look like. So we kept that level funded. But one of our, one of the issues that the conservation director is repeatedly facing is the need to remove hazardous trees. So we talked about, rather than increasing that budget, that we would request the funding of a free cash article that would be available to her as these things came up, if DPW was unable to, to help. So that's where this article came from.
No, I think this article makes sense. I think this article makes sense. I actually kind of disagree that this isn't a capital article, like, like the, this is the, an asset of the town that we're maintaining.
It just happens to be land.
Right. It's not a building, but-
But it's an operational expense.
It's not, it's not a capital expenditure. It's an operating expense.
Before she comes to the next meeting, we can send along the capital planning policy, which articulates exactly what a capital item is.
Yeah.
This isn't a depreciating asset. Right. To remove trees.
I know she'll come, and Jen's always well-prepared, but I think understanding kind of where, I don't need to know what tree, but where, generally speaking, I think that the public will be more comfortable with understanding what the plan is for the use of the 75,000, as opposed to, "Here's 75, and figure 100% of it out along the way." And I know that's not what you're saying, but I think that would be helpful.
Great. Okay. The next article, I, we should, we can talk more about, but really, this is, we've talked all along about the fact that once we do move forward with the community center, Phase One project, that we would, that we would request a town meeting to be able to dispose of the current senior center property at Fort Rogers Road. I think one of the questions that we have sort of gotten routinely is what we anticipate we could get for that property. And so this request is not a request for disposition. That would require, that will require a future town meeting vote. But this request is to work on the surveying and subdivision of that property, because, as you know, the field, the recreational field that's a part of that parcel, we would want to retain. And so we would need to create those boundaries. And then we would also want to fund the appraisal, so that we could have a better idea of what the town could anticipate getting for that property.
So can I ask a clarifying question? So I think this is smart. I mean, this is part of that whole commitment we made all along with the community center purchase, and so on and so forth. I don't feel like we, as a board, have had a full discussion around keeping the recreational fields. I realize they're an existing asset, but I would, I would be, I guess I'm kind of tipping my hand here a little bit, if you will. I'd rather the whole property be surveyed to understand what the potential is, because those fields are, can be pretty wet. The playground, albeit used, I don't think is the highest use, based on parents that kind of say it's an isolated spot. So I'm not going into this with the understanding we should retain those fields.
Okay. So, so we can identify the cost of this article, sort of maybe considering both scenarios, but I think in the meantime, we should ask the Recreation Commission to weigh in.
Yeah, oh, definitely. Yeah, I mean, and I'm interested in what the rest of the board thinks. I just didn't think we had had a conversation about that in detail.
No, we haven't. I can, I can say that, given the water level in Cedar Swamp, which is, causes the wetness on the fields, that you would not be able to dig the footings you would need even to build anything ec-grade on that property. I don't know. I mean, there's always a way to engineer it in expensive ways.
Well, all I could say is, I know-
I'd be, I'd be interested in seeing what engineers say about it.
Well, that's what you're going to get from the appraisal, though, right?
Yeah, I think we've made purchase decisions in the past on open space, based on, I'll call it sort of defensive or offensive moves, based on the possibility of what could it, could be built in areas that were like, mm, could it really be done? So, anyway, that's the premise.
I think having more information is a good idea, but-
Okay.
Kind of a floating parking lot. Drive your car-
Riverboat Casino?
Yeah.
All right. Article 17 is a placeholder. We know that there, we have borrowing authorization that we want to rescind. It's just not listed here yet. So that requires a vote of town meeting.
That's a good one. We like that.
Yeah, we do like that one.
Article 18 is the library building repair, construction, temporary library, and relocation. So this is the library article. In talking to their design team, they'll be, they'll have a number before we close the warrant. Article 19 is from St. Edward Westboro, though it is pending a vote of the committee, I believe.
So we did have a vote?
You did.
We did last night, but it's continued. There's changes that might be expected, and they'll revote it in February. But I made it clear to them that that would have to happen before the February 25th closeout of the warrant.
Okay. All right. Article 20 is from the Affordable Housing Trust. It's the transfer of funds related to the permit, that we've done this a few times, the Pulte Permit. And then Article 21 and 22 are zoning bylaw amendments. Obviously, they'll be a lot longer than that. They always are. I just haven't received them yet. I just know that they're coming. And then Article 23 is the acceptance of the Oak Street parcels, related to a special permit, the Village Commons special permit. And I will add that another article that's not on here is an update to, an update to a general bylaw from DPW. So add that.
So right now, pretty small.
Hmm?
23, 24, it sounds like 25 articles right now?
Don't see that.
25 articles, yeah. Actually, 24, because the, we're going to combine the two, cable TV. But there's, yeah.
Kristi, I just, I'm not sure if you know the answer to this, and I definitely would look for it to be presented to us, but on Article 21, the ADU, is this just to bring us into compliance with the state's new law?
That's my understanding.
Because I thought the way that the state worded the law was that pre-existing zoning can exist. can exist, but it has to be within, the lowest common denominator is the, is the state's requirement. The town could be more aggressive, and my understanding is that our zoning is more accelerated. So, I was a little, I'm a little surprised to see this there. I'll look for more information.
Yeah. I mean, Jenny will certainly present it. I know that when she gave that update when you had the last joint meeting with the planning board, she did indicate that there was a need to update the bylaw in order to reflect the state's requirements.
Good.
There are a couple of things in our bylaw, that aren't in our bylaw, that need to be there to comply with the new state zoning, you know, one of which is our bylaw doesn't allow ADUs that are physically separate from the primary residents.
Yeah, but that's my point. My understanding of the way the law is written is that it supersedes our bylaw. So, even if your setbacks aren't within the tolerance, as an example, or the separate unit is not part of it, the state says, doesn't matter what your bylaw says, the states supersedes it.
It sounds like we're going to be hearing this.
It sounds like we want to get more information, and if we want to tighten our bars to align to it, makes sense.
Right. I think, I think you're right, that currently, our bylaws don't reflect what is actually allowed, and so, we just need to make sure that they do. So, it's easier for people when they're looking at our local bylaws.
Instead of going to both.
Okay. I think that, that is, that's it for now.
Thank you, Kristi. So, I think that was it on our agenda. Moving on to issues and correspondence of the Select Board. Anybody like to?
I can start.
Go ahead.
I have nothing.
I know you're going to say that, because every time you volunteer first, we're serious about that. Alan?
Yes, I'm pleased to announce that the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, in partnership with Metro West Collaborative Development, have launched the Westboro Rental Assistance Program. This is a needs-based program for individuals who are struggling to stay current with rent, or who owe back rent, who need bridge assistance. We're offering two types of assistance. One is bridge assistance for folks who are applying for state and federal programs. Those can take 45 to 75 days to process, and so, we can help mitigate and cover rent while that's in process, and they can get into those other programs. That's sort of the emergency component. The second form of assistance that's available is rent increase mitigation. So, if eligible households face a rent increase that puts their rent burden above 50% of their household income, we can help mitigate that difference for up to 12 months. Give people time to stay current with their rent, not have housing insecurity, and either negotiate a rental adjustment with the landlord, get increased assistance from other sources, or find an alternate living situation that they can afford, but avoid evictions. So...
Congratulations. You guys have been working on that for, wow, it's a big deal.
Yes. It was all going well to the lawyers, and the Ts and Cs, and then, it's up, it's up and running. And in the first week, it was up and running. We had nine households apply. So, the need's definitely there.
Wow.
Yeah. I'll just mention, the Library Building Committee met this afternoon. We're on target to have a bid in hand for this committee before, as, as Kristi mentioned. The, right now, the bids would be due back on February 19th. So, the expectation is then that the Library Building Committee would come at maybe the following, the meeting following that. So, you can look forward to that, but there's always a lot of work going on by that committee. Next meeting in two weeks on January 28th. Thank you.
I have a couple items. Thank you. So, question, Kristi, for you, though, your town manager update, you mentioned the ongoing effort for recruiting the Social Services Senior Center Director. I was not able to attend the Council on Aging meeting this week. I don't know if there's an update on the timing of when we're closing that, and I thought we were going to maybe have a member of this board as part of the interview process. Am I making that up?
No. No. We, well, we, we keep the positions open until filled.
Yep, okay.
And so, we'll continue to do that.
And they're still coming in. Okay.
And, and then, we would have a member, we have, I think, two members of the Council on Aging is going to join us, plus a member of the board.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I was just trying to remember if you already decided who it was.
I didn't think we did.
Maybe not.
I don't think we did. I thought we talked about it.
So, we'll do that.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, on that note, I was not able to attend the meeting on this Monday for the Council on Aging. I do want to thank Westboro TV for taping it. I will watch it and provide any updates back to this board. The Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee, we just want to make this board aware, we have not met since my last update. The five-year report that's done by DEP and EPA has been closed out. That is publicly available and has been issued. I will be asking, through our process, to add that report to the Hakamaka Pond webpage, so that it's there. It's available publicly now, so if someone were to Google it, they could see it. We have not had a follow-up meeting with all the alphabet soup agencies to talk about the, to create a level of comfort and understanding as to reuse potential for that property. So, that still remains an open item, and I, and I, you know, I guess one of the things I'd ask this board to consider is, I don't know, disbanding or suspending the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee at this point. It's, I feel like in fairness to that committee, until we have clarity, they're sort of in limbo. They're on a committee that's hanging out there, and I'm just not sure when that, if ever, is going to happen, the clarity that. So, I would ask that to be a future agenda item, not a high priority, but that's that. Okay. The ATSC, Active Transportation Safety Committee, held its meeting yesterday. They have been talking about forming a friends group to really kind of support and create momentum, particularly around the B-Waltz, albeit, I think, other trails as well. There is discussion around applying for a micro grant for bike racks to be placed around town, locations to be determined but aligned with complete streets. That micro grant is through CMRCP, so that committee is working with our Assistant Town Planner to determine what the details are of said grant, and, you know, if it's just a grant, or if there's any matching, or what have you. Believe, if my memory serves, that micro grant would be, need to be submitted mid-February. So, stay tuned. I obviously made, wanted, made sure that there's town involvement there. It's not just a volunteer-led grant initiative. Also, on the ATSC, there was pretty extensive conversation about B-Waltz. Obviously, we're going to have their meeting on the 16th. I, I want to be, I guess I was really surprised, to say the least, during that meeting yesterday, that I was made aware that a member of the Active Transportation Safety Committee had sought support from a neighboring town for B-Waltz, a letter which has come to our inbox, that being from North Borough's Select Board. I was speechless, as I am now, and frustrated, and I wasn't speechless on the frustration part, that that was happening. I would say that, separate from the trail itself, I think it's important that, post our meeting on the 16th, this board work collaboratively with the planning board and our town planner and Assistant Town Planner to create clarity around the role of the ATSC, what it is and what it isn't.
Is this the same individual who in the past has been advised not to represent the town before other towns, boards, and committees?
Yes, it is. So...
Okay. Then, I think we should potentially have an agenda item to remove this person from that committee.
So, that's very, that's very possible, Alan, that we go down that path, but I think this is a bigger issue around, again, I don't want to get into a discussion, this isn't on, you know, our agenda, but the, depending upon the outcome of the B-Waltz discussion and where that goes, I think there, we just need clarity as to roles and responsibility of that committee being very clear, because there's a hyper-intense focus. And again, I think it's well-intended. I don't think any, anyone is, I think they're just excited about B-Waltz, but as we've seen with other site plans, and as I've shared, there's a hyper-focus on B-Waltz. Sorry, Shawna, you just see the back of my head.
That's okay. I can hear you.
Not on broader active transportation safety needs. So, I just think clarity is needed aside from an individual potential matter. So, I want to make the board aware of that. The meeting is recorded. I have asked the chair to make sure that all of those meetings are available through their committee website, so that said discussions can be available for everyone. Okay?
Thank you, Shelby.
That is, oh, wait, I do have one more. I want to thank everyone who has thrown their name into the proverbial hat for school committee and Select Board elections. One of the things I've struggled with as a member of this board and other committees is sometimes we lack bench depth and strength. So, I want to thank everyone. I know, I just, I think it's great. I know that sometimes it makes everyone nervous, because, oh my God, we've got all these people, but I, I think it's great, and it shows a really strong interest in, in the future of this town. So, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Shelby. I'll start off by just echoing your last comment. I think it's fantastic to have so many people willing to make such a significant commitment to the community, because it's a, it is a fair amount of work. So, just thank you to all. A couple of updates. I met with the, a few of the members, not to make them quorum, but of the trustees of Solsom Memorial at the North Street Cemetery, to review the installation of a new flagpole, or a flagpole as part of the monument that is being planned up there. I have requested that, at a future meeting, we get an update on the North Street Cemetery project. It's looking really good. They have a new wall, new fence. There's some work to be done with trees and dirt and things like that, but it's, it's coming along quite well. But, I've just made that request, so I expect that to come in the next month or two. Also, over the next month or two, the trustees of Solsom Memorial are going to go through a process to take a look at and review all of the memorials, to see what their status is for cleaning and repairs and whatnot. So, we're going to do that, that process over the next couple of months. I did attend this Council on Aging.
Thank you.
So, it was...
Please provide an update.
It was, I think Kim was a little shocked. What are you doing here, Patrick? But, so, I'll give a brief update. Certainly, still watch the meeting and add in your updates as you, as I, if I missed anything. But, I'll just remind the community that there are, first of all, I want to say thank you to Wendy Elasy, our new assessor, her presentation at the committee in regards to opportunities for seniors, various different programs from the Senior Workup Program, which, by the way, the applications are due February 3rd, as well as just other variety of programs through the state and through the town that allow seniors to alleviate some of the stresses that they may be having. I have requested on the ATSC side, I did reach out to Ellen Goode, actually, this afternoon, as a result of one of our residents' email earlier today. I could not find the video of last night's meeting, so I'm very interested to see that before our meeting on the 16th.
Yep.
And then, I will just remind the community that we are having a special meeting with the planning board in regards to the B-Waltz. It's January 16th at 6:00 PM in the Great Hall at the Forbes Building. I think there's a fantastic presentation that has been put together, and will hopefully answer many of the questions, and again, spur a good conversation between the two boards as to the B-Waltz project. I think that's it. So, I, again, I'll say thank you to Westboro TV, and I'll look for a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move on to executive session under Mass. General Law, excuse me, Chapter 38,
...position, negotiating, and...